Does anybody in the room at that to sign in? If you are, please go back to sign in. I'm gonna call the committee's order in about thirty seconds. We need everybody to re-sign in before we start. Once we start, there will be nobody else allowed to come in and speak. We've got a special call made from the vice of city council for the express concerns of citizens at a town hall meeting. And we want to do a couple things before we get the rules and regulations to start. First of all, would you join me in the valedictations?
The valedictations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get into the guidelines, I'd like to ask everybody to take a moment, a moment of silence, because remember two of our good citizens that passed, John Taylor and Jimmy Nelson, have both passed away somewhere at the last meeting. So just give us a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We've got guidelines for this town hall meeting so it can be productive. And we have a timekeeper, Ms. April Russell. Anybody that wants to speak on issue will start on one side of the room or the other. If you raise your hand, stand up and say who you are and what you want to speak to for or against. And you'll have four minutes. And if somebody else in the crowd wants to speak on the same issue or it, then they will have two minutes. Two people can speak for or any one issue, and two people can speak against any one issue. And that way, we'll be able to quell on one project, and we'll be able to get across the room and hear everybody out. So...
The other, the rest of the information is that when you're called on, you'll move up to the podium here. And if you can't get up to the podium or feel it's hard for you to stand and speak, we'll bring this microphone to you so everybody can be appropriately heard. There will be no outbursts, no clapping, no whistling, no booing. If that happens out there or here on this, in this, in this group up here, they will be escorted out of the room and won't be able to come back to any other town hall meetings. So make sure there'll be no warnings, just make sure that this is an orderly, productive meeting. And you can address this council and myself too, as far as that, on any issue that you feel is important to you. However, do not address it to any one councilman or for an answer, because they're not here to answer your questions. They're here to take the information and take it back to the appropriate committee. And I'll give you an example. Let's say that you don't want on-street parking in your neighborhood, and you stand up and speak to that. Well, if you ask one of these individuals up here, they can't give you an answer right now anyway. What'll happen is, that would be something for the public safety committee. So the ones that are members of the public safety committee, they'll take that back to their next meeting, they'll get the chief of police involved, and they'll find out what is the right answer, and then they'll get back to you. If they may have some questions that wasn't commented on that night, tonight, but they'll get back with you and ask you some questions, and they'll try to remedy the problem if at all possible. And if they can't fix it to your satisfaction, they'll tell you why they can't. This is just merely to get it in the right position and try to help this community come together and get what's needed. And before we start, I'll tell you one thing that we get calls all the time, which is roads. If you're talking about East Main, West Main, East Main, West Main, South Green, North Race, Columbia Avenue, those are state roads even though they come through the city. And they will not, we cannot address those issues. All we do is turn them in, and we get on the five-year plan. Sometimes they'll get fixed in five years, and sometimes they don't. But if you're here about concerns about one of those five streets, we can give you the number of the regional transportation department in Bowling Green, and you can call down there, and Paul Joe Plonk will do the best he can do. But if you call and ask about why this is not being fixed, the more people that ask about it, the maybe the quicker it'll get fixed. So if that's one of the issues, we'll still let you talk, but I can tell you, we can't do anything any better than you can, other than call down there. I don't think there's any other guidelines that we're, we're gonna try to have these ever so often till we can accommodate everything that's going on. You came in late, if, well, they've already taken the sheets, we've already started the guidelines, so you won't be able to speak. I'm sorry. But I'm glad you're here, anyway. If there's no other, no other comments, then we'll start on one side of the room. And where's April at? You'll time them. Please walk up this podium and make sure that, we'll make sure that you're close enough that you can be heard, and we'll start the timing, and you start talking about your project. Won't we start on this side of the room? Okay, come straight across. Stand up, give us your name and what you want to talk about.
My name is Mark B. Biggers, I'm a native Glaswegian. I lived here all my life, except for twenty years that I spent in the United States Army as a medical service corps officer. I know a lot of young folks don't want to hear this, but I have fond memories, Mayor and Wendell and Marlon were member, I fondly remember sidewalk days and the pea shooters you had to have to shoot at, folks. I remember getting out of school for Veterans Day parade. I also remember the Plaza Theater would have Saturday matinees with monsters in the crowd, with monster movies, and I missed the Highland Games. I think some of our young folks sort of dismissed the old Glasgow or the branding of the Scottish heritage that we have. Case in point, my wife and daughter just spent a weekend in Paducah, and they thought that's not by the visitor's center to see what's going on. And when they registered at the visitor's center, the lady said, "You're from Glasgow." And they said, "Yeah." And she said, "What's going on with the Highland Games? What's happened to them?" They were terribly distraught that there was no such thing as the Highlands Games anymore. As a band parent, I went to many, many band competitions with my son, and I was amazed at the numbers of people who came to those. I'm, my dad was Bobby Biggers, and I'll talk to anybody anytime. I love to talk to strangers. And these people would say, I say, "Well, you know, you got a, you got a band here." And they said, "No." I said, "Well, what are you here for?" And he said, "We're here to see the Glasgow Scotty Band. We're here to see those kilts, those bagpipes, and the sporons." Literally. And that's what they were there for, not anything else. That just amazed me. A bright spot lately, as far as our heritage, is the Barrington Ball that happened up here just about a week ago, spearheaded by Jamie, Jamie Bealy, well, Jamie Bealy Bird. But what's concerned me is that, that there's been a lot of contentiousness in the Glass, in Glasgow over the last six years. Twenty sixteen, the, I call them the, the EPB, or import tricity wars. Downtown Park, I'm here to talk mainly about the downtown park. I'm concerned that decorum seems to be gone. I'm not guiltless myself. I want to publicly apologize to Mr. Don Baker and HVAC for making a comment, sort of a snide remark, at an EPB meeting. I'm not guiltless at all. I apologize to them publicly. I feel supporters, and I know supporters believe that this downtown park will really, really revitalize Glasgow. I hope it will. I'm not against it, per se. But as for attracting business, given our, our demographics and our distance from rail, rail, rail lines, I-65, I was hoping years ago that I-66 would actually come through here. It's not, it's been canceled. So I think our, but our demographics, our schools, Glasgow and Barron County, marvelous. But it's just our per capita crime rate, our income gaps, poverty, et cetera, is just, I'm afraid that's not it. The trouble is, in any one of us, whenever we talk about, "Well, what's, what are the questions about the, the park?" Ma'am? Okay. The need, feasibility, and location. If we question that, we're labeled uninformed or lately terrorist. I don't know where the acrimony's coming from. I've been called by a member of the city council, a hate group member, when I was up for an EPB appointment. Same member, castigated, my friend John, John Dickinson, Jake Dickinson, years ago. Finance committee members are liars when they don't want to, when they talk about the funding and the ability to afford this. I personally wonder about the multi-use, given the indoor market, farmer's market. Okay. Yes, sir. I had more like five there, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm afraid we couldn't get around to everybody's room, we saved only minutes. Is anybody over here for a little cross talk?
Just in that row or behind?
Does she want straight up?
Yes. Oh. How about you?
Michael. Is that okay? Do you include that attitude?
Okay.
Do you state your name or address?
That's, I can stand, that's okay, I can stand. Most of you know me. My name is, it's okay, I can stand. My name is Alma Glover. And I have been a lifelong, well, a lifelong, I say lifelong, but I was away from Glasgow for about twenty-five years. And my husband and I retired from General Motors, and we decided to come back home and make a difference. Because when we grew up in Glasgow, there was not a lot of places that the youth had to go to. We didn't have a Boys and Girls Club at that time. And, and I worked hard to try to get the Boys and Girls Club here in Glasgow, because we did not have anything like that. We played in the streets. And so I just think that we, as a community, we do not put enough emphasis on our young people. We do not have enough facilities, and we do not have places where the young people can go and, and enjoy themselves, especially our teenagers. Our teenagers are going through some things. As you know, that the drug addiction is getting worse. And if we don't do something, it's gonna get worse than it is now. Mental health, we have all this money coming in from the state for mental health. Well, why don't we come together and try to do something that's gonna help our youth? Help them get some help. Suicide rate is high, and we have got to do something. We are not working together as a community to help our young people. We are standing by and letting the schools, we think the schools doing a good, the schools are doing a good job. I believe that. But I do believe that as a city and a county, we are not doing enough to help our young people. And if we don't venture out there and do something, I hate to think what's gonna happen in this community. I just hate to think what's gonna happen. And believe me, like I said, it is going to get worse. So I just think that we need to come together, we need to form more inclusion groups, so we can come together as a people, and stop placing the blame on this group of people and that group of people is not doing this and not doing that. It's time out for all that. If we don't work together as a city and a county, things are gonna start happening that we have never seen before. So I just feel like that we can come together as a community. I was not successful with Global Fest, and I was trying to do that with Global Fest. And I tried for sixteen years to put the, help the community come together as all different cultures of people. Okay. So I'm, I'm here to say, the reason why I'm here is because I want to see us thrive. I want to see our young people grow. I want to see families have better home lives. I want to see the hungry fed. I want to see the homeless have homes that they can live in. We're not doing good at that, either. So I just want to say, I'm here for everyone. I don't make any divisions in people. I treat everybody the same. So I just want you to think about that. Think about how important it is to take care of our youth and come together with all different cultures. Thank you.
Over here, stand up, give your address.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Glover, okay, nine seventy.
What's your topic?
Oh, oh. Amen, Ms. Glover? You're a hard, hard act to follow. Judge, uh, judge. Mayor, I'd like some clarification on procedure she mentioned, Boys and Girls Club. I'm here on behalf of the donors of the Boys and Girls Club. I just want to make sure her talk was not what mine is about. I don't want to be limited to the two minutes. I just want to make sure that that's gonna be clear. Boys and Girls Club, on behalf of the donors. And she mentioned the Boys and Girls Club, but I didn't, I don't know what she, I don't think we have the same issue. Okay, perfect, thank you. What I want to talk about today is the children. I think everybody here knows it truly takes a village, and we come from all walks of life. Everybody came together in this community from all political sides, all socio-economic circumstances. The village, this village, came together for the kids. Folks of this community, many of whom are sitting here today, folks who knew the kids need a chance and that kids need a safe place, kids need to learn, they need a place to eat, they need to eat, and they need a place to just be. They need to feel loved, they need to feel valued, and they need to know they're a valued part of this community. Kids who know and understand that become valued, that they're valued community members, become adults, who knew that they were valued community members and who value other community members. They grow up to give back and to protect the community that protected them. The kids, these folks I'm talking about today gave their own community support. They gave their own hard-earned monies and their time to show community support, to show the Housing Authority and HUD federally, the Glasgow Housing Authority locally, that they were prepared to have skin in the game. And that's important. They weren't just here to rely on government handouts for the, the children of our community who needed services. These folks were willing to invest themselves in these children. The result, back around 2014, a fundraising campaign entitled or themed "A Home of Their Own." That was the campaign that hit this town. It was the name of the campaign to raise the private funds that would partner with that Glasgow Housing Authority to build a place for the Boys and Girls Club to call itself home. That's important in just a minute. It worked. That campaign, we, the community, successfully raised over eight hundred thousand dollars. This is around 2014, eight hundred thousand dollars. HUD and the Housing Authority of Glasgow and members of the community were able to come together as a result of that and build a center and house the local Boys and Girls Club, which at the time was housed at Bunch School. Many of you've heard of the Boys and Girls Club, perhaps you haven't. The Boys and Girls Club is just a much, a part of this community service as a park, as the courthouse, as the concerts on the square. It's just as much a part of this community because it helps the disadvantaged kids. But most importantly, it helps the future. And this, tonight, is about the future of the Boys and Girls Club and the future of Barron County. It's also about the present, though, and the Boys and Girls Club is in crisis. I'm here to speak on behalf of those private donors who gave eight hundred thousand dollars and more cents. Those folks who put their money where their hearts were, who still give in time and donations. The building is under the threat of being taken away. Yep. The Boys and Girls Club is under the threat of being forced out of that building. At a very minimum, we're in serious imminent threat of losing a part of the building, which would result in having to permanently delete forty kids currently being served in-house by the club today. We've already been prohibited from using the Seven Acres around the club. If you've never been back behind the Boys and Girls Club, it's a beautiful plot of land, Seven Acres, that only a few raised garden beds are on. Community members, many of whom are here, have volunteered to donate playgrounds, greenhouses. We, forty-five seconds? Okay. More recently, though, we've been denied access to water. I'm gonna cut to the, to the chase. We're, we're forced at losing, we are faced with losing valuable space, school programming, summer all-day programming, breakfast, lunch for the kids. That building is an anchor building. If that building goes away and we go away, the Boys and Girls Club, it loses all of its satellite programs. That building, by law, has to exist, the building where those, that Boys and Girls Club is housed, maybe not that one, but it has to exist in order for the anchor programs, it's the mothership. And if we lose that building under threat from the Housing Authority, which is what the threat is right now, among other threats, I could go on for fifteen minutes and I won't. If we lose that building, we lose the future. Thank you.
Number across the room, is there anybody? Ma'am, stand up, give your name, your address, and what's your, what's your concern?
My name is Sonia Hamrick. My address is two seven nine five Carden Road, Glasgow, Kentucky. I am a county resident, however, I do work in the city. I also dig deep in the weeds, as I like to say, and go out into the community and find those less fortunate that need our assistance. And many times, I find that it's just me and a, and a few that are willing to do the work. I've been underneath bridges where I've helped people, given them coats, people that are addicted to drugs, that are living underneath the bridges. I've been in parks in the wintertime here in our community, giving out soup, coffee, coats, whatever it is I need to do to help these people. And what I find is, is that the problem is that these people are being, in my personal opinion, are being overlooked. We have one of the largest drug courts in the state of Kentucky, and I'm sure nationwide our court is really up in the charts, too. But yet, we don't have a good rehabilitation program here within the city, our county seat. We have people dying of fentanyl overdoses. Fentanyl. My eighteen-year-old neighbor, I picked him up walking the other day because I heard that he had overdosed on fentanyl. He did, he survived, thank God. McGruff the Crime Dog is good for maybe children of first to second, third grade, been in our high schools. McGruff the Crime Dog looks silly. DARE is a program that I understand is for the first through sixth grade, perhaps a little older, but DARE isn't going to take care of the eighteen-year-old, the seventeen-year-old. They're gonna, they're gonna go out there, they're gonna experiment. We need programs in our high schools that are gonna address such things as fentanyl. It's no longer just the parents' problem, it's the community's problem. We're losing these children. We're losing these young adults. I personally have a brother who is, who is currently struggling, he's an addict. I have friends who are addicts. And again, I help the addicts. I help the, the people that suffer from food poverty, which I understand is also a huge problem in our community. I know that there is a food bank in Park City that I recently talked to that is now linked hand in hand with the soup kitchen here in Glasgow, and has donated at least twelve hundred pounds of food in the last month to the soup kitchen. And I think his name is Mr. James, I'm not sure what his name is. But if we can just link together the county and the city, there are so many people out there and things out there that we're unaware of, because we're so busy arguing at the top over things like parks and splash pads and horses and, and things of that nature, that we're forgetting these people that live here, the people that are under the bridges, the people that are in the, in the projects, the people that are out in the country in the trailer parks. These people are hungry. These people are on drugs. These people need everyone within our community to come together and to recognize these problems. We've got to step down and look toward the bottom, at the bottom, and be willing to help these people. Now, I understand that there are people in the community that are a lot wealthier than I am, that have private funds that they're donating toward these parks, towards these things. I can't, I can't do anything about that. All I can do is sit up here and speak and say, "There's a much bigger problem here, and we need to get it under wraps as a community," because it's only gonna get bigger. And, and I personally am tired of losing our youth to drugs and tired of seeing people beg on the streets because they're hungry, or calling me personally saying, "Hey, I have a neighbor who has a neighbor who's hungry, can we get them food tonight?" And I see it a lot. And, and I really think that's something that we all need to just step aside from our differences as county, city, regardless, horse parks, whatever, and just come together and say, "Hey, let's work on these issues, our youth needs us."
Thank you. Coming out across the room, is there anybody in the center section that'd like to speak? Step up, Michael. Tell his name, and your address, and what's your, what's your topic?
My name is Herbert Hess. I live at one eighteen Humble Avenue here in Glasgow. I want to first off say that as a, as a, I've been a citizen of Glasgow since 2013. I'm not a native of Glasgow. My wife and I chose to move to Glasgow. We like to, the things that Glasgow has to offer checked off what we was looking for when we were looking to buy a home, so. I will, I'd like to commend the work that's been done at Corn Park. I do like the new shelter that was built, I like some of the things that have been done to beautify it. I hope the work continues. I would personally like to see the chain link fence come down. I would personally like to see the chain link fence come down around Goran Park. I like the, uh, the wooden fence that's been put up around the front and down Goran Park Drive. As a homeowner, uh, I hate dealing with that fence and I would, I would very much like for it to go away, but that's just, uh, that's just me being personal. I'm also, uh, if you go by Facebook, I'm probably in the minority, but, uh, Facebook is an echo chamber. I'm having to constantly remind myself, I am for the downtown Farmer's Market Park. I think a permanent home for a Farmer's Market is smart. Uh, it doesn't make any sense for them to have to alternate between the extension office and here in downtown several times a year, so I think a permanent home, uh, is a smart idea for the park and I wholeheartedly, uh, support it. Thank you.
Anybody on the other end?
Could Jeff and I say something real quick? I was like, it's certainly a part of the town hall, but just, you all may not like the news coverage of this body, you may agree with or disagree with it, but keep in mind that we have to cover every meeting that you guys have. And some of them are great and some of them, it is exhausting to have to sit through them and then have to recount our wrongs and what happens during the meeting. Because then you've got to look at twice, you've got to go back and you've got to watch clips again. And then people move to Glasgow and that's what comes up. And we don't like writing bad stuff, we don't like writing drama. We get zero, I'm telling you, it takes a toll after a while. And I believe if you all can, I, I know the potential's here, because I've seen, I've seen, you know, I will have to brag to Terry Vindale, he and I talked for forty-five minutes the other night, and I-
What's your, what's your call?
Huh? The point is, is to keep it, the point is, is the, the, between everybody in the media, we do not like covering all the drama in the meetings. That's my point. And keep that in mind. You, you get that by that appointment.
All right. Uh, over on this other end? Sure. State, I don't know your name, but what's your concerns are, so we'll go through.
Okay. All right. My name is Dr. Sherri Myers. I live at, uh, one ten Pocahontas Trail in Glasgow, and before my time starts, I would like to say, I really hope that you're hearing the hearts of everyone who's spoken about our youth. That, that is another topic that's close to my heart, it's not what I'm here for tonight, but I really hope that you all are hearing this. It's more important than parks, it's more important than horses. Those are important things, but I just hope you're hearing. I'm sorry? Okay. Um, for those of you, um, some of you know why I'm here. I'm here about the mosquito problem that we have on, uh, in the Pocahontas Trail area. And, um, knowing that I have limited time to speak, I'll just say, I'm going to put out a series of multimedia videos concerning, um, mosquito, um, life cycle, the vectors that we're facing, you know, a lot of things. There are so many facets to this, there's no way to cover it in four minutes. So I just want to go ahead and just kind of tell my story a little bit then, since I'm limited. In 2007, our family was growing and we were looking for a house. So you can put yourself in the position of a young family who's looking for a house. We found three properties that we wanted to consider. We wanted a four-bedroom because we had three young boys. And, uh, we came to the property on Pocahontas Trail, it was three-bedroom. We went through the house and we were really not digging it. We walked out back and saw the backyard and fell in love because we envisioned our three sons running and romping, having a good time in the backyard, backyard barbecues. We have a very large extended family and, I mean, I was, I was thinking ahead of hosting family reunions. We even had room to put in a pool. We had so many plans, like any young family would have if they purchased a property. We moved into that property in August of 2007 and my son was turning two, so we had his birthday party there. We invited all our friends and family and extended family, and to my surprise and thrill, so many showed up because I'd never had a place to entertain people of, of that nature before in my life, and I was overjoyed. And, um, I'll never forget when my cousin and mentor, one of the reasons that I not only became a teacher, but pursued all the way to the doctoral level, some of you are going to know her when I mention her name, is Bonnie Norman. She came up to me about thirty minutes in and said, Sherri, I'm sorry, honey, I just can't even stay to see him open my gift because the mosquitoes are eating me up. Within a few minutes, aunts and uncles started to leave, my precious grandparents had to leave. And, you know, all the joy that I had in this backyard, I quickly saw that, you know, it, it was devastating. Those are precious memories that I lost with the dearly departed in my family that I'll never get back because it's tainted by the memory of them having to leave because of this mosquito problem. My son was turning two, he's turning seventeen this year. Seventeen. Fifteen years we've been dealing with this issue. It has been brought to councils and mayors before now. It's not a new issue. I've been told that the issue is being worked on, but I hope that you will, um, understand my skepticism when I tell you that I was told even last year that the tires were going to be moved out and gone by winter. I was told in September of 2021 that the tires were going to be gone by, by the winter. And yet, here we are, there are more tires on that property now than there were when I was told that. So I'm very skeptical. I'll believe it when I see it. And, um, I'll be putting out a series of videos on the issue because there's a lot to say, a lot more to say on this issue because this is going to end up affecting every citizen of Glasgow. The Asian tiger mosquito has spread incredibly and it came through the tire retreading facility because those are not native to Kentucky, they're not native to the United States, and if you even do a simple Google search, where did Asian tiger mosquitoes come from in the U.S.? Tire retreading facilities. First hit, you'll find it. So, look up the vectors that we're facing with those and that my family has to deal with every day. All right.
Is there anybody else on this side of the room or anywhere else? Make sure to ask your name, address, and number on speaker.
My name is Rita Jesse. I live at four oh nine Rogers Road. I'm actually, have just met Sherri and we have the same thing in common. I live about forty feet from the tire facility and over the years, I have lived there as a child. Uh, my teenage years, my mother lived in this house and we did not always have this way of living with mosquitoes. Um, we used to have picnics and barbecues and family, too, but over the years, after the lumberyard left, we had, um, we had a blackberry patch, we didn't have Walmart then, we didn't have a doctor's office then, we didn't have mosquitoes then. Now they are so bad that my babies cannot even play in the yard, and I'm like literally right on the other side of the fence of it. And I want to thank the ones that have took time and come and visited and set out and got bitten and took the free ones with them. And I have took time this week to do a petition, and these are the people that I, I don't even know their names, but those are my neighbors that I met last week, and we all have the same thing in common, they're eat up with mosquitoes. And I am right across from the pavilion. I have been there since 2008. Uh, after my mother passed away, I got her property and it has been a living heck. I'm just not going to lie. Uh, you cannot have, there's no way of life. I know people say they're tired of us complaining. I just met her tonight, but we have something in common and we're going to stick together and we're going to resolve it. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I have a note sheet to that petition. Sure. Just put it up here, welcome, give it to Sherri, uh, Sheriff. Is there anybody else that we asked at that point to speak? If not, I will. I'll say it. Mayor.
My name's Eddie Key.
I live at eight one eight North Green Street here in Glasgow. Um, my notes aren't in order, but I just kind of jotted some things down. Some of the things that, uh, since I moved back here, I'm sorry.
What are you going to speak about?
Just general topics.
Okay. So you're not-
No, no, no specific topic that someone else has brought up.
Okay.
But, um, some of the, some of the things that I've noticed since I've moved back to Glasgow, uh, I originally grew up here, moved away for twenty-five years, and the last couple of years, I've, um, I, I moved back two years ago. So, some of the things I noticed that, um, I think gets a lot of talk, but there I don't see a lot of action, is, um, Glasgow becoming a, a, you know, a visitor town. And I don't, I don't see a lot of that because restaurants isn't a good example. Um, you know, the downtown center, you know, you want to bring visitors in, but there's not a place to get a bite to eat except Subway after two o'clock on a Saturday or Sunday. So that's, you know, I don't know, you know, George J's is great if you're there from six to ten, you know, so it's, restaurants aren't a good example of visitor quality when you come to Glasgow. Barron County itself is a farming, rural farming commu- community, and outside of Barron County, people talk about Barron County being the most fertile area in the whole state. And I, I don't know that we do, you know, a great job of building that up, you know? Do we, do we host any cow- cattle sales, any significant cattle sales? Do we host any, uh, horse sales, uh, or anything like that? Do we have the hotels to put the people up that, uh, come, would come to these events and would spend a lot of money? So there's, there's, I think there's tons of opportunity, but I don't think that there's, the talk is going in the right direction. We talk about visitors coming to Glasgow, we talk about visitors coming to Barron County, but, you know, what do we do to attract them? Um, you know, a restaurant tax would be great for the city. You know, a one percent or a half a percent restaurant tax would be, uh, a little boost to the city. Um, you know, the websites for Barron County and Glasgow, they, they aren't the best. I bet there's a dozen websites if you just Google Barron County, Kentucky. And then, one example that I saw was stop at our visitor's center and pick up some pamphlets. That's as nineteen fifty's as it gets. So, I want information, if I want information on another town like Savannah, Georgia, you know, I'm, I'm Googling everything I can on that. I don't drive down there first and then, um, then see what I can do. So, um, the Cumberland Parkway is, is very dreary, dark at night. Highway thirty, you know, thirty-one is our, in my mind, is the main, uh, exit. Now we have four exits. You got lots of lighting, but nothing off the new exits. You got dim lighting at thirty-one E, you got, when you get off at Highway ninety, you can see a five-star and a trucking company. That's not going to get people into town. You know, it, what you see, if you're a visitor, what you, when you pull off the Parkway, what you see is what you expect. So I think, you know, advertising along the Parkway, businesses along the Parkway, um, you know, annexing within the, the new bypass could all be pluses for the city. And I think there's a whole lot more. Those are just items I jotted down in like ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple, I'd like to make a couple points. My name is Jeff Jobb, I live on South Green Street, or Trig Court off South Green. Um, a couple of things, uh, my, my special emphasis has all, has been for the last twenty years, has been talking about the importance of our downtown communities. I'm not going to talk about that. I think anyone that knows me knows how, how, how I believe about that, and I've, I've pretty much begged about every one of you and talked to every single one of you pretty much at one time or another and trying to get you to quietly work with us to do things downtown. And, and, and you'd have to think hard on that to, to be able to say that I'm not being honest about that. So I'm not going to talk about that because every one of your subjects you brought up are very important, and that's what you're here for. You, you feel that. You, you, you have compassion about those things that you feel strong about. So, rather than me fighting you for what I think is right and you fighting me for what you think is right, I think we've got to stop fighting and we've got to stop trying to bully you people to do things. If we have to bully you to do it, it's not what's right. I don't care who you are, which one of you want to run with it, it's not right for our community if, if you have to bully it through. If it's right for our community, we can come together and we can agree on it because we'll talk about it and we'll all negotiate. We'll like say, well, maybe I want this or you want that. Like we did the mayor when you had to think about the sidewalks. When we, we did the sidewalks and we came together and we talked about that, we had thirty-seven people, I think, here that night. None of us wanted to take the trees down, no one wanted to hurt those trees, for God's sakes. And, and, and I was afraid someone was just going to start saying Jeff Jobb hates trees or something, you know? So, uh, we, we came together, we quietly worked on it, we agreed that the trees had to go because they're, they were causing our, our historical buildings a problem. The sidewalks had been, had been cut off and sanded down many, many times, the cracking the foundations of these buildings, they had to go, they outlived their livelihood. We did that quietly, there wasn't one person in the room that spoke up against it, maybe there was, but they didn't speak up. And we left here with an agreement to remove the trees. Our city employees got together, they didn't, in some towns, I've seen them spend eighty thousand dollars just to decide, to get a government grant to spend the eighty grand to figure out how to remove the trees or what to do with the trees. We didn't do that in Glasgow. I'm proud of the fact that we had leadership that got together with April and her crew and their, her, her people out there and got out there and took care of those tree, trees quietly. I didn't promote it, I knew when you were going to do it, I didn't promote it because I thought, if I put it in the paper, there could be some people showing up down there to mess with them, and I really don't think it's a good idea. They could have come to the meeting, could have talked with the rest of us. They didn't do it, so the trees went away, I don't know there's any problems. I think that's what we should do on every single thing. We've spent hundreds of, we've, we've spent thousands of dollars asking other people what to do for us. We should come together, in my opinion, come together, listen to each other. We, I jokingly say it's like the five mafia families. We've got five or six groups in our town that if this guy don't like what you do, he can stop your group. I can stop your thing from happening, and you can stop my thing from happening, and he can stop your thing from happening. But if we all get together and send a representative, then we can stop stopping everybody from doing things and maybe decide to do something that we can all agree with. I believe we can come together and we, there's a lot of talent, talent out there, too. So thank you very much, I just think we should try to do that.
There's nobody else? I'd like to start out and say thank all of you out there, who you protected your time and coming. Thank everybody up here, and I forgot to announce Freddie Norris is at KLC, uh, conference, so that's reason he's not here. This is being recorded, and I'm sure that everybody up here will feel a man on what's going on. And some of these things we cannot possibly do because it's state sanctioned, but we will still get back with you and give you the information while we can do this, while we can do that. And in the meantime, we'll go to the committees and everybody up here will, uh, take it to their committee and see if we can get some results one way or the other. And if something we have to throw over, well, sure, we'll, we'll work on it. And the second thing is, just because you came tonight doesn't mean you don't get to come back to the next one. Because if we haven't done anything to satisfy or we cannot, we'll take you there, but if it's in or around, but we're not moving fast enough, come back to the next town hall meeting and go through the same procedure. And hopefully, just like what you, Jobb said, we can all come together, not just to take this room, but everybody that has any input, we can make things better. Thank you so much, we appreciate you coming, and we appreciate you coming here and everybody's worked on this. Thank you so much. Look forward to having another one in the year.
Get this out of your way, I don't want you trying to use this for your cane as opposed to the, to the cane. That's one of them, that, that's a good one.